Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foster, would you please announce the television coverage?
The Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orkut areas. Re-broadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20.
Thank you very much. And now the roll call, please.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
Commissioner Overall.
Here.
Chair Burrows.
Here.
And Commissioner Gottstinker is absent today.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the Agenda Status Report. Ms. Black, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This morning you have three items on your standard agenda, and we are ready to move forward with all of the items that are listed.
Thank you. And moving on to the projection report, I'm sorry.
And I was just going to mention that we do have an intent-to-wave item, and I'll explain that when we get to it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Because it's a little bit unusual for the Commission. In terms of the projection report, you are scheduled to meet again on April, sorry, I lost my place, on April 25th. What I'm proposing, however, is that we shift that meeting a week to May 2nd, and for a very specific purpose. As I think your Commission is aware, the 101-in-motion, EIR and EA, was recently released. I believe it just went out at the beginning of this week, or early, or late last week. What I'd like to do is to have a joint briefing with the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission on that EIR, EA, to receive public input and to receive any comments of the Commission at that point in time. The County of Santa Barbara will be preparing a letter of comment on the environmental document. We'll be gathering comments in our department and forwarding a letter for the County Executive Officer to review and sign and send to Caltrans. And so, we would be happy to incorporate any comments from either the Montecito Planning Commission or the County Planning Commission into that letter. Obviously, individual Commissioners are welcome to send their own comments as individual members of the public as well. We're trying to arrange receiving hard copies for the Commissioners. I think it's probably easier for most of the Commissioners to review. It's a fairly thick document. There's a main volume, that's, you know, an inch and a half or two inches thick, and then an appendices volume of the document as well. We do have CDs, a CD available. If you'd like us to get you a copy of the CD in advance of receiving the hard copy, we'd be happy to do that. And I think David could probably get copies made this morning and have them available before you leave. The reason I would like to conduct this as a joint hearing between the two Planning Commissions is really to take advantage of Caltrans and SB CAG's offer to participate in a hearing. And I think it will be quite difficult to get them to agree to participate in two hearings. And I don't really want to pick one Commission over the other, so that's why I'm making that recommendation. The way, if your Commission agrees to meet on May 2nd, I think what we would propose is to have your Commission convene first, take up one permit item, it's the right-to-man lot line adjustment that's shown on April 24th, April 25th on your projection report now. Take that up first. Then we would convene to a joint session of both Commissions. We would take up the SB CAG, Caltrans briefing on 101-in-motion, and we would take as long as we needed to on that. I would assume we would probably put that at about 10:30, time certain, just to make sure we were done with the business of the Montecito Planning Commission and had enough time to kind of get the room set up for the two Commissions. And then, at the conclusion of the 101-in-motion item, then the County Planning Commission would remain, and they would take up a couple of items that are on their projection for May 2nd. So that's how I see the hearing working, and I just wanted to discuss that with the Commission, see if that was an acceptable proposal. So maybe I'll pause there, and then I'll go on into the rest of the projection reports, if you'd like to comment.
Does the Commission have any questions or comments on this proposal? Mr. Overall, please.
Ms. Black, I guess, three questions occur to me. Your view, as far as the joint SB CAG, Caltrans presentation, that it would occur only once. Do you anticipate that the Planning Commission would get a, could agendize for a discussion a second time, or do you feel that we'd only be discussing it just the once?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, that's a good question. I hadn't anticipated agendizing it again, mostly because the comment period on the document does close on May 25th, which is two days after the Montecito, scheduled Montecito Planning Commission meeting in May. If the Commission feels like they have some additional comments or want some additional time, and then they want to provide some additional comments on May 23rd, we could certainly look at that as a possibility.
And then, a second question. In terms of, it's a lengthy document, it covers a good section of the south part of the county. What is, if any, what is the role of the Montecito Planning Commission, other than looking at the whole document, and how about specific authority and all that?
Commissioner Overall, also a good question. Eventually, your Commission will have permit jurisdiction over a portion of the 101-in-motion project. So there, it's a fairly complicated jurisdictional, interjurisdictional project. So we have Caltrans, who is the applicant for the project. Because the entire length of this section of the 101 freeway is in the coastal zone, they will need to obtain permits from the City of Carpinteria, the County of Santa Barbara through both the Montecito Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission, because there are segments of the highway in both of your jurisdictions, and from the City of Santa Barbara. So you'll have permit jurisdiction over a portion of that project. And that's why it's particularly important that your Commission review the document. You'll need to review it eventually, anyway, but we want to make sure that the document is an accurate representation of the potential impacts, because you'll be relying on that document in your permit decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Could you speak to the scope of the jurisdiction of the Montecito Planning Commission a little bit more?
Yes. Madam Chair, we actually have to issue a permit for Caltrans improvements within the coastal zone. And the segment of Highway 101 that goes through the Montecito Community Plan is within your jurisdiction, so you'll have a permit to issue on that.
Okay. And our comments will be incorporated in the document that the county provides to Caltrans. Please tell me how that works.
Your comments will be incorporated into the comment letter that the County of Santa Barbara provides to Caltrans on the EIR and EA.
Okay.
So, we essentially will be providing comments from a number of departments within the county, on behalf of the, you know, County of Santa Barbara, to point out any issues that we think need to be addressed or modified, to reflect the county's interests.
Mr. Overall, did you have a question?
One, as sort of a guide to when we look at the environmental document, just clarify, the Cabrillo-Hot Springs interchange, am I correct that that falls within the city's purview, and the things south to Sheffield would be within the Montecito?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, that's correct.
Related to the Cabrillo-Hot Springs interchange, in line with what we've done related to development on Coast Village Road, is there any possibility that the, I mean, I'm getting way ahead of the game, but is there any possibility that the Planning, the Montecito Planning Commission and the City of Santa Barbara would have some exchange over the ideas and what might go into that?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, I had not thought about that, but I understand what you're suggesting, and we can certainly talk to the city about it. The Commission is also, both the Montecito Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission is free to comment on any aspect of the document. I mean, we're interested in making sure that that document reflects, you know, the analysis necessary under the California Environmental Quality Act, and to the extent you can provide comments on any aspect of it, I think you should feel free.
I realize I was really getting out to the permitting stage, but one precedes the other.
Right, right. But at this point, yeah, I think we'll focus on the EIR. Okay. So, just to be clear, that the Montecito and County Planning Commission comments would be gathered and contained within a letter that would be sent from the County of Santa Barbara, signed by the County Executive Officer.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to emphasize that we will welcome public comment at the May hearing.
Absolutely.
I think it is important, because people in Montecito are, do have opinions about this.
Madam Chair, while we're on this subject, and it's a little bit off the subject of the projection report, but I think it's very pertinent to your hearing, there will be two public hearings conducted by Caltrans, and those will be the week preceding the hearing, the joint hearing of the County Planning Commission and York Planning Commission. And those are set for Tuesday, April 24th, from 5:00 to 8:30, and that is to be located at the Montecito Country Club. And the second is in the City of Carpinteria, at the Carpinteria High School, on Wednesday, April 25th, from 5:00 to 8:30. So the public will, and your Commission, if you choose, will have additional opportunities to obtain information about the project and provide comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, moving on, if, so it sounds like the Commission is agreeable to that change, and moving the hearing to April, okay, to May 2nd.
I think we can move forward with that.
Okay. Moving on, your next hearing is scheduled for May 23rd, and we have several items on that date for your consideration. The first would be an appeal of the Prescott new single-family dwelling. That's been an appeal, an appeal that was filed, I believe, late in 2011, so it's taken us quite a long time to find a date that would work with both the applicant and the appellant, and we finally settled on May 23rd. We also plan to bring the agricultural buffer ordinance to your Commission, while the Montecito planning area has very little agricultural zoning. You do have a bit, and so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and could provide input to the Board of Supervisors on that ordinance. And then finally, we plan to bring the special events ordinance back to your Commission for discussion as well. So kind of an interesting day, I think.
Absolutely.
And then the next meeting that we have scheduled, but we don't show any items on it yet, is June 27th, and we'll just monitor that, and in May, we'll let you know if we indeed need to have that hearing or not.
Okay.
So that's all I had on the projection report.
All right. Any questions or comments from the Commission? If not, we'll move on. Oh, please.
I just had one, a little late one. Wondering about the involvement of the City of Santa Barbara on the 101, are they having their separate session with the group?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Idelson, I believe that the City of Santa Barbara is also asking Caltrans to, well, they're going to conduct a public hearing to provide input on the environmental document. I believe they're going to ask Caltrans and SB CAG staff to attend as well. I don't know the date yet, so.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. Is there any public comment on any issue not on the agenda? And if there is, please fill out a speaker slip. We have none. So, moving on to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports, please. Mr. Phillips.
Nothing to report.
Please go ahead.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
And nothing to report. Let's please consider the minutes of the February 22nd meeting. If we have reviewed those, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yeah. We will now move to Dr. Russell's Director's Report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. There are three Supervisors, Board of Supervisors hearings since your February 22nd last meeting. There are a couple of items worth at least a brief mention. The first was on March 6th, and that was the day that the Miramar time extension went to the Board, and they approved the time extension. And that is the time extension for the CDP for the revised project. Following that was an interesting item, which actually has been somewhat misrepresented in some of the media reports that I've seen, and that is the TOT program. What did not take place was an approval of a new program on TOT rebate. What did take place was direction from the Board to staff to bring back such an ordinance with various options for their consideration. And the Auditor Controller will be doing that, and that would be applicable to luxury hotels that are being constructed or undergoing significant renovation, including but not limited to something like the Miramar. So, that will be going back at some future date for their consideration of an actual ordinance. There were also two beach cabanas, the Bryce Beach Cabana, both in Hope Ranch, the Bryce Beach Cabana, and the Francis Rich Beach Cabana, to determine whether or not the H-LAC resolution proposing landmarking for those structures would in fact go forward, and in both cases, they did. So those now have been landmarked. And then, the final thing that took place on that day was a land development fee resolution, where we now will begin charging again for the processing of agricultural preserve contracts. And when days were good, it seemed appropriate to do that for free, but given the precious nature of general fund, it was determined that if people are going to have an ag preserve contract, which provides them a significant tax benefit, that they should pay for the processing of such a contract. On the 13th, the big item was the mobile home park closure ordinance, which was approved by the Board, including the in-place value, which was the controversial aspect, so that should there ever be a proposal for a closure of a mobile home park, in the consideration of the CUP, which would be required, the decision-makers can, if they feel it is appropriate, include a payment of in-place value, which is, can be very pricey, especially on the South Coast. And also, Key Site 3 in the Orkut area, there was a recommendation of denial by the County Planning Commission, having to do with inconsistency with the Orkut Community Plan, and the Board of Supervisors agreed with that recommendation and did deny the project, so we expect that that will come back after some redesign. And then, on the 20th, the recent meeting of the 20th, there was an item, a couple items of interest, which was a very low housing, very low-income housing project in Isla Vista called Pescadero Lofts, which is actually, from an affordable housing standpoint, kind of an exciting project. It'll provide 33 efficiency in one-bedroom apartments for very low-income individuals. There will also be wraparound services that will be provided at the location. So, this would be the kind of a transitional housing opportunity that would hopefully address some of the people who are homeless. And so, it's a very exciting opportunity. Unfortunately, that is the last of the, for now, the last of the RDA affordable housing projects, because we will no longer, the RDA is gone, and I can give you a little status on that right now. The RDA ceased to exist, and so we now have instead the successor agency, and the actions of interest right now are, we're forming the Oversight Board, that, as well as the other six RDAs across the county. And the Board of Supervisors has made appointments to the Oversight Boards across the county, including the CEO and the Assistant CEO, Renee Ball, as well as Mark Paul and a couple slots. Coming up on April 3rd, they will be making their at-large public appointments. It's my understanding that Commissioner Idelson is being considered for one of those positions. And then, once those are done, the Oversight Board will begin meeting immediately, on the 5th of April is the first meeting, to consider the various actions that are required of the Oversight Board in sort of making sure that the dissolution and wind-down of the RDA and the distribution of assets is done in a manner which is appropriate for all of the taxing agencies that were not receiving the tax increment, but will now start receiving at least a portion of that tax increment. And then finally, the last item on the 20th was the Santa Barbara Ranch Consent to Transfer. There's a, there was a request pursuant to the inland development agreement, that the county consent to the transfer to a new entity, a new LLC, that has some new players, and it was determined that it would be appropriate to continue that hearing to May 1. There are a couple of upcoming court dates, a SEQA lawsuit, as well as a lawsuit, quiet title lawsuit, having to deal with the inland development agreement and who has those rights. So those will take place, probably take place later this month, and then perhaps it'll make things clearer for the action that the Board would consider taking on the consent to transfer. So those are the items that I have. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to respond.
Mr. Overall?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a question on the Miramar appeal. It was my understanding that yesterday, 5 o'clock, was the last time that the Coastal Commission would receive any appeal on the extension decision that was made by the Board of Supervisors. Am I incorrect?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Idelson, I don't know, we're close. I mean, today, it's yesterday, today, tomorrow, but I do not know exactly which day it is sitting here. We can find that out.
I was just curious if there was any appeal or not.
Not to our knowledge.
Okay.
Mr. Overall, please.
Dr. Russell, I have two questions. The first one relates to the ag preserve fees, and I'm curious as to whether or not the fees are significant enough that you think they would be enough to discourage application. I'm not, I'm not familiar, since we haven't had the fees for a while, I'm not familiar with how much it might be, and what that interaction might be, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, the short answer is, I don't think it will be a problem for anyone, and here's why. The fees vary depending upon what variety of contract you're talking about, but our basic deposit is going to be for, is going to be $1,500. $1,500, in some, in many cases, most cases, that would suffice to process the contract. In some cases, it might be more than that, but we have set that deposit, hopefully, to be about what it's going to require. So, if it's in the $1,500 to $2,000 range, when you think of the reduction in taxes, overall, the difference in Prop 13 value versus the Williamson Act value for taxing purposes of all the land, if you look at all the land in the county, it's 40% less. And so, when, so depending upon the circumstances of a particular contract, the savings might be more or less than 40%, but when you consider the taxes on 100-acre property, which is probably a small one, the amount of savings that you would achieve in the first year would be significantly more. So I don't think that it will discourage people.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to just ask a question about, related to the TOT, and I think we're, it's all right for us to discuss that, since it's not going to come to the Commission. In the, in the press reports at least, and I didn't see the entire Board of Supervisors hearing, one of the things that did not get clarified, at least for me, was whether or not what was, might be proposed, was taking into account, let me give an example, rather than try and put words, fancy words to it. Let's assume you have one visitor to Santa Barbara. Currently, they're staying at the Biltmore. After the Miramar opens, they stay at the Miramar. And under, at least what I think is being proposed, the county would then not collect the TOT tax on that visitor. If there were no other transaction in the county, am I not correct that that would actually end up costing the county, and by extension, the taxpayers' money?
No.
You'd have the loss of revenue from the Biltmore and no revenue from the Miramar.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, if, looking at it like that, I think the answer is yes. However, the way that it was presented, to the best of my ability, because this was presented by the CEO's office, right now, this is to incentivize construction. And right now, we get, we get property tax, I'll use the Miramar as an example, although it is only one of the potential luxury hotels that could take advantage of it. I mean, Matty's Tavern up in, in the San Inez Valley might also be able to take advantage of it, but I'll use Miramar. Right now, Miramar sits there and pays a certain amount of property tax. There's no sales tax, there's no TOT.
Right.
So, if you build the, if you build it, you incentivize it so that it's built, then all of a sudden, the property tax goes way up compared to what it is now. And also, however many people might be staying there, would also be spending money, and so there would be sales tax. So even though the TOT would be rebated over a period of time, and there's a number of scenarios that are going to be considered, different percentages, different time frames, so it's not clear yet what the Board might do in terms of, you know, all of it, some of it, for how long. So then, that would be rebated, but the idea is that the county would come out ahead because of the other taxes that would be generated that are currently not being generated.
Dr. Russell, I understand what you're saying. Again, taken to the extreme, one visitor, they move from the Biltmore to the Miramar, the Biltmore goes out of business, and you don't collect property tax, or sales tax, or anything else from them, in the exaggerated model. Was any consideration given to looking at what the net increase to the TOT pool would be, and using that as the funding mechanism? In other words, if we don't have total receipts that go up from where we are now, we're not, we're... we don't have total receipts that go up from where we are now, we're no, we're, in some respects, we're no better off. We're just moving money from one hand to the other. So, if you were to do a net increase to that pool, and then the rebate comes out of that, the county would actually be giving away something that they didn't have before. Was any consideration given to that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, I believe that, that, that issue was not analyzed at the hearing, prior to or at the hearing, where direction was given to staff, but I would think that that would be an issue that will be analyzed as part of the development and consideration of the program and its implications.
Then, the last, last question, because from Montecito's standpoint, the, I guess the issue has been, how do we get the Miramar demolished and then go forward from there? What, what's the sense of timing on this and the condition put forth by Caruso related to doing anything on it?
The, Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, I would be speculating a bit, but I believe that I heard-
That's okay, we'll forgive you.
I believe that I heard that the Caruso team say that if this TOT program goes into place, that they would move forward with the demolition, and if that were to take place conceivably as early as this year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Black, did you have a comment?
Madam Chair, yes. As to your question about whether or not the appeal period had passed for the Miramar time extension, from an email I just received, I think it has. I received an email from the Coastal Commission that said that they had not received an appeal. So, I believe it was, the appeal period did expire at the end of the day, yesterday.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anything else, Dr. Russell?
No, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
And we thank you. Staying on the administrative agenda, we will now move to the intent to waive a public hearing and request Ms. Black to speak to that, please.
Madam Chairman, I asked Sharon to read it into the record-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Sharon, please.
First, just for, in the abundance of caution, then I'll explain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The project is for a coastal development permit to allow the construction of 154 square foot addition to the existing dining room area of the existing dwelling, conversion of the existing 220-square-foot garage to a bedroom, and the construction of a new 518-square-foot attached-to-car garage. The application involves AP number 009352027, located at 1150 Channel Drive in the Montecito area.
Madam Chair, this item is on your agenda to provide the Commission notice that we intend to waive the public hearing, and also to provide members of the public notice that we intend to waive the public hearing requirement. We've also noticed the, the matter and indicated to those who received the notice that if they would like to have a hearing, they need to request it. So, my recommendation is you ask if there are any public commenters here today, and if not, no action is required by your Commission.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment in regard to this issue? If not, we will move on to the standard agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the request of the Long Range Planning Division to receive and file the Santa Barbara County 2011 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report, and authorize staff to provide the annual report to the Board of Supervisors, Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, please.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jeff Hunt, the Director of Long Range Planning. With me this morning is Paul Clemente, the Project Planner for the Annual Progress Report. This is the first time we've brought this report to this Commission, and it's based on a fresh review of the Government Code, which requires a planning agency to provide the annual report to the state by April 1st. And the planning agency for the county is defined as the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission. Therefore, we're bringing this document to you today for your review. And with that, I'll turn it over to Paul, who authored the report and deserves a lion's share of the credit. He'll give the staff presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Clemente, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Today, I'll be giving you an overview of the state mandated 2011 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report. The purpose of the Annual Progress Report is to comply with Government Code 65400, which requires every jurisdiction in California to annually inform both its local decision-makers and the state on the status of its comprehensive plan, and particularly, its progress in meeting its regional housing needs. Staff's recommendation is that the Commission receive and file the annual report, and direct staff to provide it to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Board of Supervisors. This presentation to your Commission is a slight change from years past, when staff would only present the report to the County Planning Commission before sending it to the Board and the state. The Government Code requires a jurisdiction's planning agency to provide an annual report on the status of the comprehensive plan to the state by April 1st, and then forward the housing portion of the report to its legislative body. In Santa Barbara County, the county code defines the planning agency as the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission. That is why this year, we are also briefing your Commission prior to sending the report on to the state. Then, in May, we will forward the entire report to the Board, even though the Government Code only requires that we send them the housing portion. And I realize, on the slide, it says, April, we found out yesterday that it, the item has been bumped, just because the Board has a pretty crowded agenda. On the April date we were planning, so I believe May 1st is now going to be the date. The annual report is divided into five sections. The first section is an explanation of the report's purpose, followed by the second section describing the structure of the comprehensive plan and its supporting documents. The third section describes Long Range Planning's activity in 2011 towards implementing the comprehensive plan. It describes both completed projects and ongoing projects that staff will continue working on in 2012. The fourth section documents housing activity over the past year, including the number of new building permits for housing units and housing production in Isla Vista. The final section is a brief description of how Long Range Planning manages the comprehensive plan through its annual work program. In regard to the third section, the report highlights ongoing projects in Long Range Planning that are maintaining and implementing the comprehensive plan. These projects include community plans or their implementation, agriculture, housing, and climate action. There are also several minor projects that Long Range Planning is currently working on or will soon be working on. The report addresses only progress to date through the end of calendar year 2011, with further progress on ongoing projects dependent upon the upcoming budget cycle. The report provides details on housing permitting activity in 2011. During the last calendar year, 199 building permits were issued for new housing units. Eighty-three percent of these homes were deemed affordable to moderate incomes or below. There were 65 at moderate income levels, 98 at low, and two at the very low income level. This affordable production was due in part to permits issued for the Creekside Village Project in Los Alamos and various mixed-use projects in Isla Vista, as well as units in Lompoc and Orca, which have substantially lower market prices than on the South Coast. Permitted special needs units include 10 residential secondary units, 18 mobile homes, and two farm employee dwellings. Once again, staff's recommendation is that the Commission receive and file the annual report, and direct staff to provide it to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and then forward it on to the Board of Supervisors. From here, staff will be providing the report to the state within the next couple of days. Then the sta- then staff will forward the entire report to the Board of Supervisors in May, once again, not April, as it says on the slide.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the staff? Is there a public comment on this issue? Do we have any? I guess we don't. If not, I will bring it back to the Board, the Commission, We'll take just a minute to, to read this information. Mr. Idelson, are you ready?
Well, it just, it always blows me away at how much work the state sends down to our, our county and our staff to prepare these reports for, for their use. I guess it's necessary, but I still become overwhelmed with the idea that we never seem to have enough development. We've never, California is so highly populated, and we have air quality issues, we have water issues, and yet, there's consistently the requirement, the mandate to, to do more building and more providing of, of dwellings, and, and we have circulation problems. But I guess there are other powers that are making those decisions. That's all I have to say.
If you build it, they'll come. Mr. Overall, please.
Mr. Clemente and Mr. Hunt, following on Commissioner Idelson's comment, I, I think it might be helpful if you could explain to us what the obligations are on the county related specifically to the RENA numbers. It strikes me that these are projections, and what actually happens may or may not conform to that. And the question is, what is the, what is the county's obligation and, and what, what control does the state have over not just the numbers, but what actually has to get built?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's, it's a somewhat complex answer. I'll try and distill it down, and you can follow up if I'm not answering your question. The simplest version of RENA is, the state gives us a number through SB CAG that says, we have to show we have zoning capacity for a certain number of housing units. If we have that zoning capacity, then we're done. And they certify our housing element, and everyone walks away for the next five or eight years in our situation. If we don't have zoning capacity, then we have to add zoning capacity. And once that zoning capacity is added through rezonings, then we're done, and we don't see them again for five or eight years. Eight years in our case. We have an eight-year cycle now. The last housing element that the county got certified wasn't that simple, and the state conditioned our housing element. From what I've understood in talking to the state, we were one of maybe 10 or 12 jurisdictions, including cities, so there's over 500, that was, that were conditioned. The housing element was conditioned. Those conditions is what is affecting the housing report. So, when we report on Isla Vista, that is based on the conditions on our housing element that show that we show adequate progress in housing production in the Isla Vista area. And if we don't show adequate progress, then there's consequences. So, we're in somewhat of a special case, under a little bit more scrutiny than the average housing element or the average jurisdiction.
A follow-on question. So, if I, if I've got this right, people who sit up in Sacramento have the ability to look at what we're doing and say, we need more housing, and by extension, condition their approval or whatnot, based on whether we actually produce that housing or not? Is that more or less correct?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the first answer is, the state can tell us we need to do more zoning. The RENA's, in actuality, do not have to produce housing. Under, again, under the simple scenario that I explained earlier, we have to show zoning capacity. But at the end of the day, we don't have to show that the housing has been built. In this case with the county, because we're under scrutiny, they are actually asking us to report on our housing production. There, there was some skepticism on our housing element, that the housing would be produced as we suggested. We, our housing element is very reliant on housing being produced in the Isla Vista area, and the state was skeptical of that, and therefore, they're asking us to, to report on the progress in housing production in Isla Vista. And if we don't show housing production, there's a chance the state could decertify our housing element, or require us to do rezonings with a threat of decertification.
Mr. Phillips, please.
Are you sure you're done?
Are you done?
Mr. Hunt, how would they be skeptical if, in fact, it's a, it's zoning capacity, that's an objective mark you can see? What's the skepticism?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, generally speaking, they view vacant land as being more easily developed. And anytime you have constraints on land, either natural constraints or existing development, they're, they take a more skeptical view, which, which is true. It's, it's generally easier to develop vacant land than land that already has buildings on it. So, that, that's the essence of it.
But if, but if it's zoned appropriately, the whole, the whole structure supposes that market forces come in after the zoning and produce affordable housing or not. Anyway, I guess you answered my question odd that they would feel that way.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, again, I'm, I'm the messenger for the state. I mean, we, we made the exact argument that, that you alluded to, is, well, the zoning is there, and the market will take care of it.
Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, just to point out, I know your Commission doesn't see these projects, but we have seen quite a few redevelopment projects in Isla Vista over the past several years. The Loop, Paradise Ivy, the Icon and the Icon Gardens projects were all very recent, fairly recently approved by the county, and they did include a fairly significant component of, of housing and affordable housing. We also have the project that was just approved by the Board of Supervisors last week, Pescadero Lofts, and that was 100% affordable housing project. So, I think the argument we made with the state is, Isla Vista really is a unique area and shouldn't be treated in the same way for their concerns over redevelopment, and we'll see how that works out.
Very good. So, we are making some progress. All right. Any other comments? Then the procedure before us is to receive and file this progress report. We have received it. We have made comments. Now, does the Commission choose to file this?
Madam Chair, are you looking for a motion?
I suppose so. Yes, please.
I move that we approve. Is that what?
Receive and file.
Receive and file. I move, therefore.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Yes, please, Ms. Black.
Madam Chair, you might want to just refer to the motion under the Recommendations and motions, and just amend the motion to include that, because it's receive and file and authorize staff to file the report with the state.
Yes. Do you accept that amendment?
So, so moved, yeah.
All right. And, Mr. Overall, do you accept the amendment to the motion?
Yes, a second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break.
Commissioner, or, or, Madam Chair, before we break, I just have a very quick question for Mr. Hunt. Do, do you have any idea how much the preparation of this report costs?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I don't have an estimate. We, it was assigned to Paul, and to be honest with you, we take last year's report, and we modify it. So, it's not like we have to start from scratch every year. From Paul's work, I would say he worked on it for a couple weeks, but he has other tasks as well, so it wasn't like it was strictly his project for two weeks straight, but.
So, we, and we have to file this every year, is that correct?
Yes, and it's, it tends, there tends to be a lot of focus on the housing portion of it, but again, the other portion of it is that we need to indicate progress on implementing our comprehensive plan. Of course, housing tends to get most of the intention, because that's one of the elements of, of the comprehensive plan. But we shouldn't overlook the other aspects of the report.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a five-minute break, please. We will now reconvene the meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission, moving to the standard agenda, item two. Ms. Foster, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the request of Steve Welton, Agent for the Owners and PJC Ventures, to consider the following: 11 CDH 33, 35, 36, 37, 38, applications filed on August 8th and August 15th, 2011.
We'll now move to-
Sorry, I wasn't done. And to consider the 15164 addendum to the Negative Declaration 07 NGD 45 pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you.
All right. We'll now move to the staff report, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Julie Harris, and I'll be presenting the MPJC Ventures projects. It consists of five permits, as we read into the record. The first permit is for constructing a shared access driveway and other improvements, including the utilities for, for the project area. And four permit applications, one, one each is for a single-family- And four permit applications, one, one each is for a single-family dwelling on the four parcels that make up this project. The parcel site, or the project site, I should say, consists of four parcels that are zoned 7R1. They're located on Danielson Road, the southern part of Montecito, as shown on this air photo. These four lots were created in their current configuration in 2008 with the approval of a tentative parcel map. The lots are approximately 11,300 to 400 square feet each. The parcel map was recorded last year. And this air photo, which was taken in 2010, actually shows existing development on the property. All of that development was demolished last year in May, and so the site is currently vacant right now. There were, how, there were two single-family dwellings, a duplex, three guest rooms and some other accessory structures, including garages on the property previously. So for an overview of the whole project, I've used the, the overall site plan, which shows the location of the various components of the development. The, let's see if I can get this showing up here. We are looking north. This is Danielson along the west side of the four parcels. And the first permit, 33, would approve the construction of the improvement, the driveway improvements here, which consists of a split one-way ingress, a one-way egress, but then they join together to form a, a joint driveway to access the four parcels. So, and then, and then there's a single-family dwelling that's proposed for each lot. Each dwelling would include an attached garage. All of them would be at least two-car garages, except for Lot 3, which would have a three-car garage. And then as well, each property would have at least one and possibly two additional outdoor parking spaces. Each dwelling is proposed to have 2,500 square feet of net floor area and a two-story component. The floor areas are approximately 50 square feet over the recommended floor area ratio. That is in the architectural guidelines, but these house sizes would, would be consistent. They were also considered under the original map that they would be building houses of this size. The next four slides will show the elevations of each proposed dwelling. The first, Lot 1, is located, let me back up for a moment. As you can see here, we have the four parcels. Lot 1 is in the northwest corner along Danielson. Lot 2, moving south. Then Lots 3 and 4 are in the interior portion and are not, really wouldn't be very visible from the public road because they would be interior lots, they would be blocked by the developments on Lots 1 and 2. So moving back on to Lot 1, this parcel is adjacent to Danielson. The west elevation in this corner, this would be the elevation that would face the street. There would be some yard space and landscaping that's part of their landscape plan, including a screening hedge would be part of that project as well. And then we have the other four elevations of the house. Lot 2, also on Danielson Road. This lot is act, this, this proposed house is actually sits at an angle. I'm going to back up here to the slide so you can see how the house is actually kind of at an angle and isn't square on to the public roadway. So Lot 2, probably the most visible elevation from Danielson would be the north elevation, which is kind of facing more northwest and it looks out towards the, the ingress portion of the access easement. So this is probably what would be most likely visible from the public roadway. What's identified as the west elevation actually faces kind of to the southwest. So those are sort of the corners that would be most visible to the public. Lot 3 would be in the rear portion of the property and this shows the proposed elevations for Lot 3 with the three-car garage. The west elevation was the part that would be facing most towards Danielson. And the proposed house on Lot 4 would be behind the house on Lot 1, but this does again show you the proposed designs and drawings for the house. This would be the west elevation. For this particular project, we propose to do an addendum to the negative declaration that was previously approved for the parcel map that created the four lots. That negative declaration analyzed the potential impacts of new development that could occur on the four lots as they were configured. And it anticipated development of a house on each lot being 2,500 square feet. It also anticipated and analyzed potential impacts to visual resources, to tree protection. Is there a number of mature oak trees on the site, as well as a large specimen ficus tree, all of which would be protected? It was intended to be protected under the original negative declaration and there were mitigation measures to protect those trees and they would continue to apply to this project. It also considered grading, drainage, fire protection, and water quality protection in the usual, the usual issue areas. With this project, we proposed the addendum because there were, there was a, a small change that was made to the access driveway. And I'll talk about this more in the next slide, which illustrates the, the change that One of the mitigation measures under the original negative declaration was that the project and the access be, be consistent with the standards of the Montecito Fire Protection District. Under the original configuration that was approved under the map, the, the separate ingress and egress driveways were designed in this manner. They were 12 feet wide in the one-way portions and they had a longer planting island around an existing oak tree that is to be protected. Once the actual proposed dwellings were submitted to the county under the recent permits and underwent additional review by the Montecito Fire Protection District, they requested some changes in order to meet their, their access standards. And the applicant, the applicant worked with them and they agreed to widen the proposed driveways from 12 feet to 14 feet on these one-way portions. And to reduce the size of that planting island, as you can see here, it's been pulled back. And that would be to provide greater access maneuverability for the fire department. So we looked at fire protection and the mitigation that was part of the ND and confirmed that this, these changes would still be consistent with the mitigation measure that was in the ND addressing fire protection issues. We also looked at the bioresources section where we had previously analyzed the impacts and, and included mitigation for tree protection since we do have this mature oak tree for protection. And the, we received a report from an arborist determining that these changes would still, could still be accommodated and protect the tree so that there'd be no impacts to the tree. And so we concluded that this, these changes would be minor and that the mitigation measures that were already identified in the ND would still be adequate for this project and the changes that were proposed. The section 6.2 and 6.3 of your staff report went through the policy consistency and the ordinance consistency in detail. But just to, to summarize that, the policies protecting visual resources, oak tree and specimen tree protection, minimization in grading and drainage were all found with this project, were found to be consistent with the Montecito Community Plan and the coastal plan. And the specific details of the project were found to be consistent with the Article 2 ordinance requirements, including the height limit, setbacks, parking requirements, et cetera. The four single-family dwellings have been to the Montecito Board of Architectural Review for conceptual review and comments. It was originally seen in July of last year and again in October. There were changes that were made to the design of the project in response to the MBR's comments at the first meeting. They also did a site visit with story polls to look at the project. Overall, in October, the MBAR concluded that the architecture, the size, bulk and scale of the development are acceptable. They did have some concerns about height overall and suggested that, even, even though that everything, they find everything acceptable, they did suggest that it might be a good idea to lower the height a little bit and especially lowering the plate height on Lot 1 by a foot, from nine-foot plates to eight-foot plates. And these comments were made in consideration of concerns raised by a neighbor about views being blocked by this project. So if you would like a little more context, my supervisor can assist with that. I was, I was unable, I wasn't part of the project at the time. It was, it had been reassigned to me. So finally, staff would recommend that you make the required findings to approve the project and that you determine that no additional environmental review and EIR or a negative declaration is required, that the addendum is appropriate, and then that you prove the five cases as recommended in the staff report. Thank you.
Ms. Almy, would you like to add something?
Madam Chair Commissioners, I was sitting with the MBAR when they reviewed this project both times. And that last comment where they suggested lowering the height of the, of the plates on Lot 1, what were in direct response to Mr. Horoshi, who's a neighbor, is concerns that his private views were being eliminated. They did not require this of the project because they felt that the project was all in all acceptable and that they were ready to make their preliminary approval, which is why it's been forwarded to your commission. But they did have that one comment, which your commission is left to consider as well.
Thank you. Any more information from the staff?
Madam Chair Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation. We're ready and happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this point? If not, I would like to ask the commissioners to make our site visit reports and ex-party communications, please.
Mr. Chair, I met with Mr. Cogden first months ago, maybe not a year ago. But I think it was more in the nature of my real estate background at that point. I'm not sure you knew I was a planning commissioner at that point. And that discussion was about the feasibility of this project in that, in that neighborhood, as I recall. And I told him to get out of town and go to Venturas. It's impossible here. No, I didn't.
We don't have far enough.
No, I didn't. And I met with Mr. Cogden a few days ago and walked the site and looked at the property then.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Idelson, please.
Yeah, I met a while back and went over the property with the applicant and with the architect and viewed the, the site completely.
Thank you. Mr. Overall, please.
I was on the site visit with the MBR, I don't know, two, three months ago.
And I did a site visit and met with the applicant and the planner. Thank you. We can now move forward to the applicant's presentation. And Mr. Welton, you have 10 minutes, as we agreed earlier.
Good morning. My name is Steve Welton. I work for Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services. We're the agent for the project. And as you said, we have about a 10-minute presentation, probably less. The first slide we have up here is an artist's rendering of what the project would look like upon completion, although it doesn't show the proposed trees that would be added to the project post-completion. Our project team is mostly here. We have Jim Cogden and Marty Posey, the owners. Sophie Calvin is the project architect. Josh Monroy and Sam Mephus were the landscape architects. Josh is here and he'll be speaking with us a little bit later. Mike Assisi and Dale Weber from MAC Design, they're not here today, but I think we can answer any questions you might have on their, their, their background. And of course, I'm Steve Welton. Just a little more background on the project. I think Julie gave you a pretty good summary of it. As she's pointed out, we were before you in 2008 to review this project and you agreed to subdivide the project from two to four lots in 2008. Marty and Jim worked with the design team, worked hard to get the map recorded in the summer of last year. And part of that was meeting all the conditions of approval. There were 42 for the original subdivision. And there are no modifications from us as part of this project. Details, as Julie pointed out, each resident is about 2,500 square feet on quarter-acre lots. The garages are between 420 and 527 square feet. Each of the units are individual. It's not a cookie cutter type of development. There's a common driveway. We did work extensively with Montecito Fire Protection District on accommodating with their desires for access. And one of the conditions was a sewer main extension. And that had to be approved by the Montecito Sanitary District as part of the map recordation. So we've done that. The permit has been issued for that and in fact expires in April. So we're applying for an extension so that we can keep that open. So going to a visual real quickly, just to orient you. Let's see, laser. Red button. There we are. There's Danielson and one-on-ones over here. These are the two key trees, I think, on the site. The larger one is a, is a big ficus. It dominates the project. The one on the top is an oak tree. And those were important because as Julie pointed out, we had to bifurcate the driveway to allow for ingress and egress to be separated and protect that oak tree. The fire department also asked for a hammerhead, which we've integrated into the project. So when you come in, it, it actually acts as a entry to two of the houses in the rear. And then the sewer lines and utilities will be undergrounded through the main driveway right there. So one thing that we didn't look at with your commission as during the map process was architecture. And Julie pointed out, we went to the BAR in, in October. They found that the, the project was acceptable in terms of the size, bulk and scale. There was a comment regarding the size. And like Ann said, I, I'm not even sure the whole BAR felt that way, honestly. I think it might've been one member or two members that mentioned that comment. But in general, I think we got positive comments. We were directed to go ahead and move forward to your commission. And so to give you a little bit more about the actual architecture, Sophie Calvin's going to come up here and, and show you some slides.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Sophie Calvin and I want to go through, this is looking at Lot Number 1. And first one, I met with Jim and Marty to establish a program of what they wanted to create on these four lots. They had a strong feeling that each house should be three-bedroom, three-bath, that it should be 2,500 square feet, each house having two-car garage. Lot 3, which I'll get down to, has actually a three-car garage. They wanted to be very sensitive, to be neighborhood compatible, and they wanted a family style, family floor plan, and also a very feeling of a beach community kind of house in style of architecture. So on Lot 1, you'll notice that the darker grayed area is the second-story portion and the lighter gray. And it shows a separation between Danielson Road and how that second story is kind of set back. When we started looking at site planning of this whole thing, and because we had this avenue of driveway cutting between the four parcels, really had to look at what footprints would work and where the houses could be sited on each parcel, taking into consideration solar orientation so that open yard space, open, public spaces on the first floor could have sunlight in, in certain rooms, creating open yard space that would be usable for each parcel, really kind of created, pushing all of these houses to the outer sides. So it created kind of an open area on the inside of these four parcels. And of course, the driveway dictating access to each one of these, so drive, so that the garages could be pulled in quickly and then, and then creating private space, open space for each, each house. So here's Lot 2. Lot 2, as was mentioned, was kind of angled because of the driveway to get access into the driveway as well, but also creating in the upper south corner, sorry, southwest corner, creating open, oh, I have to hold it, open space. One other program requirement was that not only open floor plan, but having vaulted ceilings on the first floor and creating loges off of each one of these four homes that would incorporate a fireplace for the living room, as well as a shared fireplace on the outside of these loges, which created additional. on the outside of these loges, which created additional open outdoor living space. The little graphic on the top is showing where it's located relative onto the parcel. So this is Lot 3. It had the biggest potential for building envelope, and this parcel, this house, has a three-car garage. And the intent on all of the designs was to create the largest footprint on the first floor and then create a master bedroom on the second floor. We're creating two master suites for each of these houses, and taking advantage on a couple of the parcels for the mountain views. And there's Lot 4, creating the driveway, guest parking, and then the open yard space and logia off in this quarter, where you could see this is kind of the open space, southern exposure, light for the property. Getting into the style, the beach style, we're proposing shingle siding. We wanted to incorporate some rock veneer to kind of anchor these houses. We have a combination of raised metal seams and asphalt shingles. So Lots 1 and 3, let me go back, master site. So Lots 1 in kitty corner from that Lot 3 would have the asphalt shingle roofs, and Lots 2 and 4 diagonal from each other would have the metal seam roof. It was important to also feel, to have a color scheme for all of these homes that married and worked with each other. And I have color boards with me. If commissioners would like to review those, I'd be happy to hand those out to you. And we're using, we're primarily, oh, let me go a little further because we can see them in the renderings, earth tones, grays, gray, green, all those colors, and each house being a different color with a different roof color as well, but all working harmoniously together. I could see some of the, there's the raised seam roof of Lot 2. This is Lot 3 with the three-car garage and the covered logia off to the side. There's Lot 3, elevation, rendering. Another thing to point out is that we, all the plate heights for the first and second floor being nine feet. Still allowing first-floor areas, first-floor floor plans to have nice vaulted ceilings, also on the second floor as well. Going back to, oops, going back to Lot 1, which is this parcel, talking about how far away that second floor starts before it goes from Danielson Road. One board commissioner was mentioning particularly the height on this parcel. The average height of all four houses is 24 feet. The Monceta Board even discussed that even if it went from nine to eight, it wasn't a one-foot reduction, and this ridge probably wasn't going to be enough of a significant change to warrant doing that. So we kept it at nine.
Can I interrupt you long enough? Go back to that one. What is the distance from the road to the beginning of that second story?
Well, we have 20 feet in the front yard setback, so that's where that first structure, and I believe it's another 15 feet before the mass, and probably another 12 before All of the homes have a 4-12 pitch roof, and we feel that the mass of the second stories are kind of getting reduced in the appearance of a full second-story mass because we have roof lines coming up to those walls of the second floor. I think that's about it in my presentation. If the commissioners have any questions, I can answer them after I introduce Josh Monroy from Earthforms Landscape Architect, or if you have questions now, I'd be happy to answer them now.
I think there are a couple of questions now. Please, Mr. Phillips.
Nothing terribly important. I like the 4-12 a lot. It really, it's a nice, it's a nice roof design. What is the architecture? How would you describe this architecture?
I would say it's an upscale beach feeling. It's not a bungalow. I would say that it's a beach front with a little higher-end class because we are adding very nice doors and windows and stone veneers.
Beach, huh? I don't know that one, but okay.
Cape Cod.
Yeah, that's what it feels like to me. Kind of East Coast, yeah.
[inaudible]
Madam Chair, perhaps we can ask the speaker to be on mic later if we want to ask questions?
Yes, please.
That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Overall, please.
I would like to see the color boards on Lot 1 and 2.
Okay. All right, we can just pass those down.
Okay, this is Lot 1.
Lot 1. This is 2. Yeah, this is 2.
To the rear? Oh, just for, let's.
3. Well, they're certainly compatible, I suppose. Mr. Idelson, please.
I had a question on the parking, guest parking, and on the, I guess you'd call it a private road there, or whatever you want to call it. How much curb parking would be a reasonable estimate that you would get per dwelling?
Oh, am I going the wrong way? For the master site? There. If I can go back. So on Lot 1, there's the two-car garage. There's one, there's probably two parking spaces here, guest parking spaces. On Lot 1, actually, it's a unique situation because we have a turnaround driveway off this main driveway, and then we have plenty of room back here because you drive in, here's the two-car garage, and then at least two guest parking here. And if you continue down to Lot 3, this is a three-car garage. This is the hammerhead for the fire truck, and there's an additional guest parking space here. And coming down here into Lot 4, there's two guest parkings at least here, well, there, and then a two-car garage in here.
But when we're looking at the curb, I mean, just out at the street itself, instead of just being in the property, would you estimate there's one per parcel at street side?
Currently, the hedge is right out there, you know, and so all that is going to be pushed back. So I would say that there would be four parking, four additional parking spaces out on Danielson.
Okay. Because of the cul-de-sac nature, usually when you get into a curb like that, you run a little short on street parking. I think you're aware of that. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I turn it over to Josh Monroy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. My name is Josh Monroy. I'm with Earthform Design, the landscape architects on the project, and I would just like to take a couple minutes to walk you through the landscape portion of the project. This is our overall conceptual landscape plan. As I flip through the slides here, you're going to see, this is a graphic showing the existing vegetation on the property that is to remain as well as be protected. In the interior, this is a large mature ficus tree that will remain and be protected. We've worked with a local licensed arborist to come up with tree protection measures that include protective fencing, as well as tree protection measures that will be monitored throughout the project. The green ovals denote the coast live oak that will be also protected and to remain. The yellow circles are denoting new specimen trees that are to be proposed on the project. We have a total of six 24-inch box Quercus agrofolia, or coast live oaks, to be included as part of mitigation, as well as creating more of an oak canopy and an oak feeling throughout the center of the property. We're also proposing specimen trees such as jacaranda and flowering plum, and let's see, what else do we have? Evergreen pear, acacia, and other flowering trees. See, I think that's the last of my slides. I'll just talk you through the frontage a bit here. There is some existing plant material that we're proposing to remove. It's a small group of jade plants so that we can create some more space along the frontage here. This will all be bark mulch so that we can have pedestrian circulation and/or parking there at the front. There's some existing pitasporum shrubs on this side of the property, and we're proposing to, let's see, let me go back, proposing to infill with some more pitasporum on both sides here to create some screening and some buffering from Danielson Road. There's also a six-foot cedar fence proposed behind each of sets of screening shrubs, and we'll be screening on both sides of that fence, as you can see. We'll be using plant material that's compatible with oak tree planting so that they are low water use and native and have a good chance of, or excellent chance of survivability. Going around the perimeter of the property here, there's also new screening proposed along this property line, as well as at this portion of the property, there's some existing pitasporum here that will also fill in with more plant material. This denotes more existing plant material along the rear of the property. That's all to remain and to be protected, as well as continuing around on this portion of the property. So overall, we're going to keep everything that we can that's there, that's healthy, and infill as needed throughout the perimeter of the property. As far as the interior goes, this line of shrubs is planted to create some separation between the two lots and the parking areas so that we have a visual buffer, as well as a plant softening and screening, and that'll be on both interior lines there. Let's see here. Overall, the plant palette is native and drought-tolerant, low-maintenance, flowering trees and shrubs that will blend with the Cape Cod style. I believe that's the landscape presentation for now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Overall, please.
I think you may have said, and I missed it, what is the fencing material along Danielson?
Six-foot cedar fencing, wood fencing. There's kind of a section of it right here. I'm not sure if you can see it there, but standard cedar fencing, and that'll be throughout the property. It runs along the outside edge, the interior here, as well as here. Existing fencing to remain all the way at the rear of the property, and we'll just kind of match that same fencing. And it'll be planted as well on both sides to soften.
Mr. Idelson.
I have a series of questions on the landscape. I want to start off with maintenance. What part, how is it going to be maintained? By who?
By who will the, who will maintain?
That's right.
That would be the individual owners, I would imagine, the new owners.
So we're talking about the, okay, where this fence is going to go on Danielson, and where you're going to have plantings out there. That'll be the owners of each one of those houses, will maintain each of those situations.
Correct.
Okay, let's talk about the trees in the center, the oak tree, as well as the ficus tree. How will that be maintained or protected?
Again, I think it would be up to the individual owners to maintain the existing trees that are on their individual properties, on their individual lots.
Okay, now, in the plantings, I assume the same thing, that all the plantings around any house will be just determined by each one of the individual neighbors?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, what we would like to do, because your commission reviewed the color boards, is just to show those up on the ELMO so that that's part of the record of your proceeding today.
All right. Where are they?
So Julie's just going to
Okay, please.
...place each on and pause for a couple seconds so that
Thank you.
...we can capture those. And Madam Chair, if you're going to consider those color boards as part of your decision today, then you may want to vote that into the record. While it's not a written submittal, it is, you know, more than one page, so just to be really clear, I think you just want to vote them into the record.
All right, then, we will do that.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, not all quite fitting on here at the wide angle, but this is Lot 1. And Lot 4.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the commission to please vote these color boards into the record. Mr. Overall?
Does that require a motion? I move it if it does.
Thank you. Let's do that.
And I'll second that.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, they are part of the record. Does the applicant have any further presentation?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, no, we do not, although I would, just that last point was made regarding parking along Danielson, because as Sophie said, the existing shrubbery is right up to the road right now. In fact, it's, you know, there's really no place to walk over there, and so part of the project will be, and getting our road encroaching permit will be to remove those shrubs, and there'll be more walkability. It'll be places to park without impinging upon traffic. So it's a little, we think it's a little safer, actually.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Mr. Idelson's comment earlier raises an issue for me. We set aside these specimen trees and protect them. Indeed, at least two I see are going to be in common driveway areas. There will be a shared expense for the driveway, I'm sure. If it would include maintaining and being aware of the health of those trees, that would be important, I think.
Yeah, I think we can accommodate something that way.
You wouldn't want everyone saying, "It is my tree."
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So could you discuss a little bit about how you might protect the ficus, for example?
In terms of during construction?
Well, that, the short term, but also the longer term, in terms of maintenance.
Yeah, we could probably include something like that within the purchase contract or something like, I don't know if Jim has any thoughts on that, but
Do you want me to comment?
Yes, please.
This is Jim Cogden, one of the two owners.
Thanks very much for hearing our petition today. My plan is to create a simple road maintenance agreement that all four owners will agree to. Part of the road maintenance agreement would be maintenance of the road, which would be long-term, and also maintenance of the common landscaping. long-term, and also maintenance of the common landscaping. And keeping it relatively simple, I'm going to place the burden of the irrigation on the particular property owners that are adjacent. The ficus tree happens to be on lot number two, and so irrigation, if necessary, would be the burden of lot number two. But it's going to be relatively minimal, but they'd have to agree to that.
All right, is there some way, well, we'll get to that later, we'll go on to the other questions. Mr. Overall? Oh, Mr. Idelson, please.
Okay, so in your sales contract, you'll have reference to each of these details to the buyer, so it won't be a surprise they'll know it at the time of acquisition.
The, the road maintenance agreement would be recorded against each parcel.
Okay, but also on the trees, that some reference into the, will all be a part of their contract?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Overall, please.
Just to follow on suggestion, I think it'd be good to have that reduced to CCNRs that apply to all of them.
Yes.
And have the county approve that, make sure it covers these things adequately, so that it's not up to the contract at the time you get around to, you know, to marketing them.
I, I agree with you.
Okay.
All right, so how do we handle that? Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, I mean, you could certainly add a condition. I need to caution the commission that relying solely on CCNRs is really not an enforceable method, so I would write it as a condition that is enforceable upon the permits, and that the CCNRs are really just used as a notification process.
All right, okay. All right, are there any other comments or questions? If not, is there any public comment on this project? If not, we will move on now to further discussion and questions from the commission. Mr. Overall, please.
I have questions for Ms. Harris. Related to the environmental documents, I wonder if you could tell us the history on the drainage component of this project? I'd like to know what the previous built-out area was on the property versus what the proposal is now, and then you might discuss what the, what the measures are to assure that. I know it says the grading and all that, but I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, is there an increased amount of drainage requirement on the property based on this development? I couldn't quite get that out of the documents.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Overall, the original proposal, and it has, and, under the map, and as it was analyzed in the ND and then carried forward with this project, is that the existing drainage patterns must be maintained with any development. The site was developed with, with a number of structures, and the historic drainage patterns were primarily sheet flow for about, I want to say about more than three-quarters of the property, sheet flow generally to, towards the east, and then a smaller, and then the remainder, the remainder sheet flowed to, towards Danielson. After some consideration during that previous, during the previous map project, it was, the final determination was that the final grading and drainage would be, to be maintained, that consistent drainage pattern, and to not increase drainage off the property site with new development, or require the construction of any kind of drainage improvements that would concentrate any kind of drainage as it leaves the site. So, there was a drainage report that was prepared and considered for the recordation of the map, and then, again, a final report was prepared for this specific, the specific proposed buildings, and that report was reviewed by the County Flood Control District, and there were some modifications that were made to their drainage plan to ensure that it would maintain this previous condition upon the development of this project.
If I might, with a follow-on question. What is the material specified for the driveway development? Is it permeable or impermeable surface?
It would be a permeable surface, that would be of an acceptable permeable surface, that would be acceptable to the Montecito Fire Department as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Idelson, please.
Yeah, I have a question, both for staff and for the applicant. What I want to know from, from staff, was there any interaction with neighbors relative to this project?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Idelson, since I was assigned to the project, I've not had any communications from any neighbors. I have reviewed two comments that were provided to the Montecito BAR. I don't, unfortunately, I don't know if, if there were any verbal communications with the previous planners on this project.
Okay, then I would also like to ask the applicant if they had any issues that neighbors brought up, since the neighbors aren't here, we don't have anybody here to reflect any views. I assume everything is, is pretty good, but if, if I could hear from the applicant, I'd appreciate it.
We had some comments from some of the neighbors at our, the first MBR meeting, two neighbors that were owned adjacent properties appeared, and one was directly to the east side, and one was to the south side. And with the process at MBAR, they just pretty much brought, said, "Everybody come on up." They hadn't seen the project, they hadn't seen the house designs. And by the end of that meeting, those two neighbors were satisfied, they even commented, "This is a good-looking project." However, the person to the south side, once again, I offered him a personal invitation to meet with me when we had the story poles up, and he was concerned primarily about lot number two looking down into his backyard. So, we put the story poles up, I brought the plans out, I showed him the windows design, and he was satisfied, and he said, "I'm okay with it." And then, at the second MBAR meeting, we did have a neighbor, Mr. Houdesay, who lives across Danielson Road, and he had quite a few issues, lighting, he was concerned about the driveways, especially on the egress driveway, the light shining directly into his master bedroom window. And I tried to assure him that because of the configuration of the driveway that was going to be downsloping towards Danielson Road, as it's exiting, the lights would be heading down and not up, or even level. His house sits about, is elevated above Danielson Road as well, plus he has a six-foot-high solid fence. I didn't think it would be much of an issue, however, we attempted and had a meeting with the fire department to flip-flop the driveways, and they felt that it would be a safety hazard. So we were unable to do that. And then his only other concern was the, his view corridor to one segment of the mountains, and we addressed that issue. We actually, while we had the story poles up, I wasn't requested to do it, but I just wanted to try to do this, and we lowered that plate height by one foot, that ridgeline, and it just didn't make a significant impact for him. But since then, we've had a little interaction, and we're friendly, he's shaking my hand. By his not appearing today, I'm assuming he's okay with the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the commission? Any other information from staff? If not, we will move toward consideration of this project. Do I have a motion?
I, I like the project, I think it's great for the Danielson area, I hope we see more of it. And I'd like to move to adopt staff's recommendation in the entire, in its entirety. Does that suffice, counsel? Thank you.
Did you want to include the word, the verbiage that we had about the tree maintenance?
You know, I, I think we lose jurisdiction after this permit, after this hearing, so I don't know that we, we can continue to insist that people are nice to their specimen trees, or even be aware of their condition. If we can, I, I, you know, I think it's a good idea. Maybe, maybe I can recommend that the shared driveway agreement reflect an obligation to maintain the specimen trees that have been called out, if there's no objection to that.
Madam Chair.
Please.
If I could just point out, we do have a tree protection and replacement plan on
During the construction, right.
But it's, it's a condition of approval of the improvement plan, and so I think it really covers what your, what your commission is discussing.
Is that binding beyond the construction phase?
It's, it's our, Madam Chair, it's, it's our, and members of the commission, it is our standard condition to ensure that trees that are important are retained on site. I would have to look at the precise language to see if it's binding into the future, but I think that is our intention with the tree protection conditions, because we use that to ensure consistency with policy findings.
Okay, so you have amended your motion to add verbiage, or not?
Well.
Or do you feel it's covered?
Maybe, maybe I can help. The very, very, very first statement of the tree protection replacement plan is, "The existing coast live oak trees on the project site and adjoining parcels shall be preserved." That's the intention.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a lot of language about how those trees are to be protected during construction, but I think that the overall intention is that those trees be preserved.
And that extends to the ficus?
Yeah, the ficus has been called out.
Yes.
Does it, does it, does it continue, does this obligation continue from the owners to the new owners?
Yes.
And, it will?
Yes.
All right, I, I think we're okay then.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
If I could just add, the thought that I had was simply that Mr. Cogden, the developer, had supply of CCNR language, because I think there's more at stake than just the trees. I think there's the maintenance of the driveway, the fences, maybe other items, and I think it's up to them to determine what that is. I just think it'd be nice if it were written out and reviewed, that's all.
So my motion would be for approval with the addition that there will be CCNRs in place to preserve the, appropriately preserve the common areas?
That's fine.
All right. Well, let's try that. Okay, I
All right, so we have
I moved to adopt staff's recommendations and findings, and with the addition that the, the applicants create or proffer CCNRs to the new owners that reflect the, the tree protection, maintenance of, I guess, a permeable driveway and appropriate fencing in the common areas? Let's see how that goes.
Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, I just want to restate what I said before, which is, we do not monitor compliance with CCNRs.
Right.
So.
Right.
I'm not sure the value of this condition, honestly.
All right, let's, let's hear from Mr. Walden, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you. I think we'd be willing to provide the CCNRs, my only concern is timing, so if you choose to do that, I'd be interested in the timing, maybe it'd be prior to occupancy clearance rather than CDP issuance. I just don't know how quickly we can come up with CCNRs that would be acceptable for, for submittal, I don't want to delay proceeding with the project on those grounds. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Black, as I understand it, the county doesn't monitor compliance, so we don't get where we're trying to go, I think, with the CCNRs. Am I correct on that? All right, then, let's see.
Madam Chair, let me withdraw that attempt
Let's start out with
At the addition, let's, let's approve, let's move, I'm moving to approve staff's recommendations and findings, and the tree, the trees, I think, are protected throughout our jurisdictional window, and beyond that, I don't see what we can do. And the hope would be that these trees are taken seriously, we're not calling them out for no reason, and that they, there's an attempt to keep them alive, and, Mr. Overall, any other things on that common area that concern you? So, so let's, I'll move to adopt staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
I'll second that, and I think the project is, is a very good use of space, and I think it's very appropriate for the area.
Okay, Mr. Overall, did you have questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck to you. We'll take five minutes for setup for the next item. Item three.
And 15305A of the State Guidelines for the Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the staff report.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Brian Banks from the Development Review South Division, and I'll be presenting the QUAC addition and setback variance request this morning. The project before you today is for a coastal development permit for an addition, for additions to an existing single-family dwelling, and for a variance to request a reduction of the required 20-foot front setback. I'm sure the commission's all aware of the area here, but this is the Miramar Beach Drive area. This residence is the third from the end before you reach the Miramar Hotel property. The proposed project includes additions of 18 square feet to the existing residence, third-floor deck extension, that would be the elevation facing the beach, removal of an existing flat entry roof, and the extension of the existing sloped roof at the northern elevation, the elevation facing the road, the addition of some clear-story windows at the beach elevation, window and door changes, and an interior remodel. The site plan here shows the area in blue of the proposed additions. It's a unique configuration existing. The area in blue here on each of the three floors, I think when the project was designed, was a little alcove there to allow a window to be placed there for some probably light and ventilation. The reality is, with the proximity to the, to the neighbors to the west, it's not of much use. So the proposal today is to infill, simply infill each of those little alcoves on each of the floors, and I have an elevation that might make more sense, to allow for that extra 18 square feet. And while it's not a lot of square footage, it would allow for an interior remodel and reconfiguration of the, the existing house. I want to also point out, it's a, it's a little misleading here, but this area in blue here is actually an open area of the existing third-floor bedroom that the applicant is proposing to, to frame in and create additional, essentially, floor space for the proposed master bedroom. So this is an open area currently, it would be framed in to create additional floor space at that third floor. The area here would be the proposed deck extension, and what that would do, and again, I apologize if it's not clear in the site plan, I'll show you in elevation, to extend the existing third-floor deck area and have that line up with the first and second-floor This slide shows the area in the front at the north elevation, the work that is proposed. The red line indicates approximately the required 20-foot front setback, so property line here, that would abut the Miramar Beach Drive right away in East Bend. The red line, again, representing the required 20-foot front setback. The blue area here indicates structural work that would occur within the required setback, and thus the request for the variance. for the variance. So the condition is currently that the structure exists within that front yard setback, as many of the other Miramar Beach homes do, and was actually constructed within the setback in 1980 with approval from the county. However, in that variance request that was approved, there was no specific mention of the work that was required in the front yard setback. There was findings made and approvals given for reduced setbacks on the sides and for a small variance to the height. And again, the structure was approved. However, there was not expressly any permission granted for the front yard variance. So essentially, today, before your commission, is what I would consider a cleanup of that issue. We do have a non-conforming condition out there with the portions of the structure that are built within the front setback, and this would clean up the record for the future and allow for the proposed removal of the existing flat entry area, an extension of the existing sloped roof to cover that front entry area. And again, I think the elevation's will be helpful. Are there any questions at that point? I know it's a little confusing.
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. The photos here may help. The photo to the left is the existing condition, so here you can see, and essentially, staff's taking the photo right in the front parking area that's on Miramar Beach Drive. The existing condition here, which is a covered entry, this is the flat-roofed entry that has some drainage problems, and thus, the applicant's request to extend the existing roof line down to meet the existing structural footprint of it. So we would not be requesting, or the applicant is not requesting, any further encroachment into the front yard setback than exists. And here, these photos would show the beach elevation. You can see the interesting configuration here, where these are large windows. They are not sliding doors or patio doors, because this area behind is open, and there's no floor area there. So, and this gives another good view of that. In terms of floor area ratio, the project was reviewed by Montecito Board of Architecture Review, and the floor area ratios were considered, along with the neighborhood compatibility. The proposed additions would total, the proposed additions to the existing dwelling, the structure would total 1,551 net square feet. The recommended floor area ratio for this property is 1,800 square feet. So the project would be 14% below the recommended floor area ratio, 249 square feet below. And overall, the Montecito BAR had positive comments regarding the architecture, and did not have any comments regarding the size of the structure. The project would be exempt from CEQA review pursuant to Sections 15301E1 for existing facilities, which exempts the construction of the additions and deck extension, and 15305A, which allows for the minor alterations in land associated with the variance for the front yard setback. The project would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Montecito Community Plan, the Coastal Land Use Plan. The site is adequately served by the Montecito Fire Protection District, Montecito Water, and Montecito Sanitary. The MBAR considered its neighborhood compatibility, agreed that it was. And with this project, there would be no impacts to environmentally sensitive habitat, coastal access, or the recreational uses of the beach to the south of the property. And with approval of the variance, the project would conform to the Zone District standards in terms of setbacks and heights. Staff recommends that your Commission approve the project and make the required findings. Your motion should include, make the required findings for approval of the projects as specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the CEQA findings. Determine the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Sections 1501 -- I'm sorry, 15301 and 15305 is included as Attachment C to the staff report. Approve the requested variance, and approve the project, case number 11CDH58, subject to the conditions of approval. That's the end of staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the Commission? Anything further from staff? Does the applicant have -- oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Idelson, please.
I just was going to make a motion, but it's not ready yet.
I wanted to ask about the applicant. Is the applicant here to make a presentation?
Good morning. My name's Jason Grant. Brian Banks covered it quite well, just really a remodel of a property that was built in 1980 and just needs some tender loving care, so that's what this is all about. Thanks so much. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? If not, thank you so much. Would you please state your name?
My name is Jason Grant.
Thank you. I think you did that, absolutely. Any public comment? All those people out there. All right. We'll then bring it back to the Commission for any further questions. If not, action. Is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept all of the staff recommendations on this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you so much. Good luck to you. Is there any other business before the Commission? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.